Well, it's nice to be here.
Yeah.
Look, look over here.
Lucky I didn't step in.
Usually I always check on things too, now you just check out somewhere where you're going.
Check out how much.
Why in America?
It's strange. It's like, which is pretty cool. They swag, Chris, man. I gave most of my way there.
Fine, I mean, who's a good guy?
Yeah.
And I have a headlight, on his light, because it did, it always came out like, my suit are gonna have to tell life, yes.
I was like, what are you doing down there? But he's really started to spark her. Does the ground need to go to a vacuum?
It's a little.
Oh, so she's done. You have three or your own.
Yeah.
No, we did. Yes. And I believe that I haven't seen him very recently here, but I'm sorry he was bigger. While we were like, I'm getting school, but I did make sure they were.
The Redwood Trail, I think, done.
A lot of them there.
Oh, my God, it all started, it must have been, everybody was looking at the clips.
It was right, it started to sound.
And it wasn't ready clips.
It was, yeah, I'm a lot, so I'm very tired of it.
Oh, I have this one last time, I told him, yeah. This is why I've been out of town.
Why I was there with his friend for a second, he said, oh, so I can work with him later. So I didn't know what it was just like. I had a shirt around.
Yeah, that's what I think, they are not, I mean, right now. Yeah.
They didn't still do a six story. Yeah, I don't think. Ready or an hour.
Recording in progress. Auto order the regular meeting of the Ria Del City Council, roll call please.
Mayor Garne's here.
Mayor Proton Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Orr. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Will.
Here. We, um, returning from closed session, there was nothing to report out. Will please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration as the council directs. Unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Got anything, Rich?
No.
Any emails?
No.
And we will close public comments. Is there any, um, council member wish to remove anything from the, one of the items from the consent calendar?
No, no.
You want from the public? Then is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I have some moves.
We have a motion, second.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Motion carries forward zero. Reports and staff communications, page twenty in our packets, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. Um, well, last week, uh, staff had a meeting with Senator McGuire. Uh, and water board staff to go over, uh, some of our projects, in particular, twelve point nine million dollar, uh, water distribution grants, our sanitary sewer evaluation study. Uh, and others, uh, to, uh, you know, assess and figure out how to move these projects forward. And, uh, uh, we've also been working on, uh, uh, the painter street one, upsized project in particular was raised as, one with some hurdles to, uh, to cross. And so, uh, fortunately, there was, uh, some, uh, permission forms that we needed to obtain. Uh, for some pre-existing easements that the city has in order to conduct a cultural resources survey. Uh, and a, um, a botany survey of the area to search for, uh, obviously, uh, historical artifacts or, uh, other endangered plant species. Uh, for the line, uh, painter line, uh, upsize and, um, project. And so that was completed, so, uh, the latest hurdle was, uh, was crossed off. And we do have some assurances from the state that they will be, uh, moving, uh, all of those applications forward as promptly as possible. And we are still on schedule, uh, to put the, uh, water capital improvement projects, uh, out to bid, uh, around February twenty twenty four. Um, and our SSCS sanitary sewer evaluation study looks to be extended and additional funding for additional camera work, uh, we expect to be approved. At today's board supervisors' meeting, there was an agenda item, uh, related to habitat for humanity and their work in Ria Del and also, um, across, uh, earthquake impacted areas in the county, Fortuna, and surrounding areas. Uh, so if you haven't, uh, weren't unable to watch the board meeting today, uh, it will be on access humbles. Uh, certainly that, uh, section is worth a, a watch and a review. And then, uh, in wastewater, fun wastewater news, our, our NPDS permit was, was approved. So, uh, Derek, do you have anything to add to that, uh?
Uh, don't really. We got, I mean, our Title twenty-two engineering report done in the irrigation field, so we're ready to go out there. Uh, a couple of minor changes, um, not really significant, um. And the big one is potential here in the next five years, you know, making the study, you know, for the most part, we're, we're pretty close to compliance on the Corbin project. I mean, they was looking great, um, you know, obviously, out the painter street upside, it looks like it's gaining traction and might be a reality here, sooner than later. So, a lot of big ticket items, they knocked off the plate, it's really.
Yeah, and so that, the NPDS permit stands for National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. They, we, everybody has to have these, uh, permits if you're, if you're discharging. And, uh, it is a big haul, every five years it comes up, and then each year it becomes more and more complex. And, uh, I do want to thank Derek for, uh, his work on bringing that, uh, to the finished line. Uh, with that, uh, no other comments, uh, but happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, city manager, thank you, Derek, and congratulations on getting that, because that is a big, it's a big to do. Yeah. Um, Mayor Proton.
Uh, no questions, just thank you for everything everybody does.
Really.
Rich, anything? Any questions? Emails?
Yep.
Andrew, so. And thank you, staff, for everything, and we will close that item and move on to. Discussion on USDA Rural Development Direct Loan Opportunities, page twenty-six in our packets. City manager.
I'm gonna hand this over to Travis, uh, Sandmore, our finance director.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Garne, members of the city council. Last week, staff met with Reeve Atwell Smith, a USDA community program specialist, to discuss future direct loan and grant opportunities. Funded through the USDA Rural Development Loan and Grant Programs. A discussion about the funding programs was discussed in greater detail, including the community facilities, direct loan and grant programs. These funds can be used to purchase, construct, or improve essential community facilities, including public facilities, street improvements, and public safety. And public work vehicles. Funding available under this program includes low-interest direct loans, grants, or a combination of the two. Based on recent census data, Ria Del now qualified for grants that could cover up to seventy-five percent of the project cost, or up to fifty thousand dollars, in the greater of the two. Direct loan terms and rates are determined during the application process, but entertaining rates as low as three point eight seven five percent, with loan repayment terms up to forty years, dependent upon life of the facility. Water and waste disposal loan grant programs are another USDA rural development option that is intended to fund or finance the acquisition, construction, or improvement of water and wastewater facilities and infrastructure. Funding terms are similar to that of the Community Facilities Grant Program, and will be determined during the beginning of the application process. The last funding mechanism discussed with the USDA specialist was the Disaster Funding Grant Program. The city was encouraged to apply for this limited tranche of money, amounting to twenty-four million dollars across the state of California. Ideas included applying to offset the city's anticipated multimillion dollar liability. As a result of the twenty-five percent cost care, the city potentially will be responsible for earthquake damage. Another proposal discussed supporting the city's efforts to address the INI, or inflow and infiltration issues, intensified in the aftermath of the December twenty twenty-two earthquake, and documented by the city's contract engineer, GHD. City staff will continue to work with USDA reps to ensure robust and impactful application is submitted. Thank you for your guidance, and I'd have to answer any questions in my house.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
When do we know if we are on the up for the twenty-five percent? Does there even answer to that question?
You know, I don't know if there's a specific answer. What we have to do on our end is, we've submitted and applied for the, the designation that we can apply for the one hundred percent, which was step one. And every single project off of that list of about twenty or so projects, we individually submit a request for reimbursement. And that goes to the state, and there's really no timetable for when they'll get back to us. So for each of these projects, we'll submit a request, and it's really a waiting game to, you know, try to find out. They wouldn't be approved, if approved at all, on a one-on-one basis, there's no blanket.
So they can do like seventy-five on one project and a hundred on another, and eighty-two percent on something, okay, that's good.
I'm not sure about part, part reality of the seventy-five percent.
Okay.
I haven't heard that option, but, um, you know, that ran out of the situation we're in right now. So, one of those options that we thought about exploring was future projects and that liability that we have. None of this is retroactive, so anything that we've already completed, which is many of our smaller projects, um, you know, has already been done. But we have a, a lot of large multimillion dollar projects that, um, are gonna require a lot of, uh, assistance from a, a lot of different arms of the government. And, uh, this is just one way that we could try to talk to that.
Yeah, right. Um, that's it for questions, just, um, you know, thank you for staying on top of it and for being succinct and clear when you're slurring through it. So I always appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, councilor Will, no, councilor Wilson?
Yes, this, this doesn't have anything to do with it. We had something coming from the council before, they want to build up this after.
Oh, and with, they came with nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this, this is.
This isn't part of that, but one thing to note is that, uh, many different applicants can apply for USDA loans and grants, uh, including, uh, private citizens, school district, fire district, cities. So, uh, a number of people can, you know, utilize the USDA service, this is just one that we're hoping to bring on board this year.
That's only question, thank you.
And I don't, you know, we had a question, I don't remember it, so. I think you know it. So, um, are, do you have a question up there, Rich? Yeah, you're, you're my focus. This is bad. Any hand raising, emails? Okay, well, um, then, is there anything that you need us to do, or any action we need to do, or any?
Not at this time, we'll, we'll continue to, uh, keep the council private of any further developments with this. And, uh, we anticipate on submitting a complete application within the next few weeks, trying to capture any disaster grant funding available.
Oh, and that, that was what I was gonna ask you. So can you catch, can you apply even if you don't know? Like, you don't have the answer about the seventy-five or a hundred percent.
Correct.
Can you apply for a loan to cover that twenty, that twenty-five percent, even if you don't know yet?
We can, so we would, uh, request as much as they essentially be willing to, to grant the city. And, uh, you know, showing them our list of projects, our potential liability of five to six million dollars, uh, just based on that initial estimate. And then we kind of go from there, uh, just depending on how much of that, that money that's allocated is still available.
Right.
Um, and how sensitive they are to, you know, our, our request.
Okay, and then the loans, would you be, would that be considered low interest loans, would the city?
It's a consideration, and certainly one of the funding mechanisms they offer, they do with grants, or loans, or a combination of the two. Um, and since we do qualify as a severely disadvantaged community based on the last census, uh, we would be, uh, have the ability to have a higher grant to loan rate yield. But again, most of that's figured out as you go through the application process, and they will be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now we'll move on to the update on Gateway Project. Page thirty-one in our packets. City manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. Um, so I would, uh, you know, follow this under the category of, uh, you know, good problems to handle. Uh, well, I'll reiterate this, uh, in the staff report. Um, so the city of Ria Del was awarded Clean California Grants in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, the project includes tree planting, your vegetation upgrades, and, and an exercise station. Uh, so staff has divided the, the project into two separate components, uh, which one is the gateway landscaping, and two would be the exercise station. Uh, during the city's recent mandatory walkthrough for the gateway landscaping bid, uh, we did have three, uh, contractors come through, uh, to receive a briefing on the project, and were eligible because of the attendance to submit proposals. However, only one proposal was submitted, uh, for Miller Farms in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. And it's important to note that this amount does not include the costs associated with the exercise station. Um, so staff is, is recommending negotiating with the contractor to reduce the scope and costs of the landscaping portion of the project in conjunction with the Gateway Ad Hoc Committee of, uh, Mayor Garne and, uh, Mayor Proton Carter. Uh, and also staff of the Clean California Program. Uh, ultimately, the cost cutting most likely would involve reducing the number of, uh, trees planted in the gateway. Uh, additionally, staff is recommending looking into some additional financing resources to help, uh, complete the project in addition to the scope reductions on the landscape portion. Um, so we want to try to tackle this, uh, for multiple angles, including cost reductions and, uh, and identifying some additional funding sources. Um, so staff fully applied for, and the city has been awarded a five thousand dollar grant for Pacific Gas and Electric towards the project. Uh, staff has applied for a, uh, nearly twenty-one thousand dollar grant to a central credit union. We do, uh, expect, uh, to be informed one way or the other before the end of this month. Uh, as to whether that, uh, grant will be received, and that was specifically for the exercise station equipment, that's, uh, what cost of that, uh, particular equipment. Uh, there are other possible grant opportunities through, uh, that have not been identified yet, maybe through the Hulery Foundation or other charitable organizations to help fund the project. Uh, there's also a city approved mutification funding in the amount of, I believe, actually, it's thirty-eight thousand. That was included in the budget, so I'll go with track that. Uh, there's also, uh, approximately a quarter million dollars left in the Economic Development Fund for the city. And then, of course, the city does have general fund and other earmarked capital reserves in, are for, uh, for capital-related projects. So again, uh, staff believes through a combination of cost and scope reductions and identification of new funding for the project, we can still deliver, uh, a good project for the community overall. And, uh, so staff will return, obviously, we're to the council for approval of any, uh, contracts, uh, with, uh, uh, with Miller Farms, uh, after the negotiation. And then, uh, the action that we're asking from the council is to go ahead and accept the bid. Uh, and direct the city manager to, uh, develop an agree, an agreement, uh, with, uh, Miller Farms in coordination with the Ad Hoc Committee and Clean California Telegram, uh, to return to the council for final approval. And then if there's any other specific direction or, um, opinions of the, of the council members, uh, as to how to go about cost and scope reductions, that this would be a good opportunity to, um, provide additional direction to staff. So with that, I'm happy to return to the mayor and see if there's any other questions.
City manager, I'm, is there?
Um, I was, I sat on the ad hoc, so I'm, I'm aware, I, obviously, it would be great to produce the cost, um. I, something we talked about in the meeting is that the, the, the community needs to see something pretty, you know, uh, something that kind of upgrades our town, I, I think that just firm around a boost, something like this is important. So I'm inclined to go ahead and put.
That's it. You, councilmember Will?
Um, I don't know if this is exactly what you're asking about. I hate to see any money come out of the Economic Development Fund or the General Fund, but I'm willing to look at the other one.
Yeah.
I think it's important that we keep money in the economic development.
Where, Wilson? Uh, how much was the exercise equipment?
So the exercise equipment itself is, is, uh, just under twenty-one thousand.
And I just, what was it gonna stall on this annoying toll of time here?
Um, so we, but we don't have an exact figure for that, the, the project has not yet been put out to bid or receiving, uh, a bid for it. But we anticipate that there will be an additional, uh, approximately thirty-five thousand dollars to set up the ABA, uh, facilities and, um, and set it up.
Okay, so there's, we're up to fifty-six thousand. And then on top of the two eight seven, which we, yeah, we had, we had a grab of. About ninety-seven, that was, you got five thousand and ten, correct, thirty, uh, twenty-one thousand and thirty-eight thousand?
Uh, we, right now, financing the project is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, Clean California money, and five thousand dollars from P D N A. And a potential, this.
Potential of co-potential, correct. And then there was the budget, there was money budgeted for thirty-eight thousand for mutification, for mutification. Yeah, I don't have a real answer to that. Uh, here, uh, councilman Carter saying, but I also, and also, uh, councilmember, I, Will all saying, I think you see anything taken out of, particularly in economic development, or the general, the general fund is, you talked about it here, you're going to turn. So, I mean, what's, you know, I mean, city was deep, I mean, I, um. If I have, if I have fun. But I only have to ask you, other than my personal concerns and reservations. Thank you.
And I, um, I, you know, I, I really want to go forward with it, I think that, uh, city manager, reaching out to the state and explaining, you know, the finances of it, and perhaps reducing the number of trees, because, was it a hundred and twenty?
It's crazy.
It's, it's a huge number of trees. So I think that even less trees would still offer a lot, really, of, you know. So I think, you know, that because a lot of the, a lot of the expense is coming from the excavation of the ground and, and repairing the ground. And so if you have to do less of that, then you'd be able to recover some of those funds. Um, so I, um, I'm, I'd love to, it's my hope that we do, um, give the city manager the authority to move forward with it and to negotiate with the state and, uh, with Miller Farms, and hopefully, um, work out where the number is, um, is acceptable to everyone. I, I would argue, not a large number, but I would argue that some money, well, coming out of the economic development actually isn't adverse, because having a town to come into that is beautiful, that people feel good about, actually, I think, would actually add to our economic development. But that's, um, that, that's just my, my little argument, but I wouldn't want a lot of it to come out, because I know we really actually need it for bigger economic.
Can I ask you a question? So if you put a, look at less trees possibly?
And we, because we do have some really sad ones. So would we still, um, would we add the cherry trees in those areas, or would we still take out all the trees there and put cherry trees, or just down the sides? Cherry trees was your pick, right? Right, yeah. Um, I don't understand. Okay. So you're gonna go with less trees, but we're taking out all the trees that are there. All the leaning trees. The other cherry trees are staying. Yeah. Cherry, but what about, like, in the middle, we have some of the tall trees that are growing up straight, and, and they're still healthy. Right. So I'm just, I mean, I'm just wondering. I mean, I think, I think the overall recommendation from the Ad Hoc Committee was to have all one tree, the same tree, in all places. Okay. Um, so that's, yeah, no, I mean, yeah. So I think that's, that, that is our recommendation, I shouldn't say I think, I know, that is our recommendation. Um, and I think it'll fall into, the determination comes down to what can be negotiated. Okay, I just wonder. But yeah, I, that's what I'm hoping.
And I would just add, the mayor, uh, had a, uh, hit on an important point, which is that the bulk of the cost of this is not so much in the trees or in the irrigation, it is in the soil preparation. Uh, because part of the reason the prior tree plantings failed is that they're planted into old road base that drains very quickly and doesn't retain nutrients. And so a fairly large area has to be excavated for each tree and muder. So the old dirt has to be, the old gravel has to be transported out. And the new dirt has to be transported in, and that's by far the, the single most expensive component of this project.
Can I ask you a little question? Randy, when we put in those trees down there, did we have the nursery put them in, or did we put them in?
Do you remember? I was on the tail end of that, and I mean, we put in a couple with a, um, so it's doing on, and then just, uh, for like the tablet, all the dirt.
Okay, I just wondered. Okay, so is there then a motion to give the city manager authority to move forward with the Miller Farms contract, is that?
Let me just, uh, uh, recommend the.
Yes, yes, to those change.
Yes, to go through, yes.
The, the staff's recommended action, they're just, the staff's recommended action. Would that, would that come back at the end of the negotiation in town? Correct, yeah, so no, no, uh, since this obviously well exceeds staff's authority to engage in a contract, uh, we would have to bring anything back to the council for full approval.
So is there a motion to, did, what, sorry, Frank?
I was gonna ask one of the question. Is, is it possible that any of this can be done by public works, with our public works crew to do some of this defamation, uh? They're gonna, I don't, we gotta go by dirt.
So unfortunately, I think our staff is full up on chasing down random water leaks and just the day-to-day operation and engaging in a, in a project of this size. This is not, um, realistic for the project to come in on time, um. And, uh, I don't have really any tree experts on staff either, so.
Is this your deadline on?
Yes, absolutely, uh. By the, uh, end of June is the twenty twenty-four, is the.
And that was extended because of the earthquake, I believe, that, that one, or.
The, or the bike trail, uh, it's a, it's a, yeah.
Do you have a motion? Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to accept the staff's recommendation? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion in a second? Motion carries forward zero. That brings us to council reports. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, let's see, this past Saturday, I represented the city of Ria Del at the great Redwood Trail community event down at the Dire Mill Overlook. It was a really good event, it was, um, well attended, we had some good speakers, uh, a lot of good little pop-up things, a food truck, it was, it was fun. Um, I will say that our table got a lot of attention, because we had the coolest stuff. And you were happy, and, um, I did get mostly. And that made me very happy, and, um, I did get mostly grown men to ride the pink bike with balloons attached to it, and lovely pictures, they're on the Instagram page. Um, and it was, uh, I think the eclipse actually really helped us, like a lot of people pulled over to watch the eclipse and just kind of stayed. So, um, I was happy to do it, and it did go well, and, uh, those things are fun, so whenever they pop up, feel, feel free to visit, um. Tomorrow at three P M, it's in this room, actually, we have a nuisance advisory committee meeting, three P M, open to the public, and Thursday at four P M, beautification walkability pride, also in this room, also open to the public. And I know the fire department is doing the truck retrieve thing over here on Halloween. So I get that out there to the massive audience, um, to go ahead and, uh, you know, visit the truck retrieve, ask a sign, wear a costume. I think that's it. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Will, what else?
I'm just, uh, next week is hard to be, uh, you know, I have H W S A, my best. Actually, I don't, I don't think that's really important for people.
Thank you. Councilman Will, what else?
I went to the chamber meeting, and the main topic of conversation was Christmas. Getting ready for Christmas, and how we're gonna set it up, and who we're gonna get to do certain things. And, um, it's pretty much going like it was, we still have to get permission to move the bridge and get that set up. But that was the main topic of conversation for that meeting.
Are they still planning to get volunteers to decorate on Saturday, the eleventh? They didn't say, and the eighteenth, no, no, that's what I have. Chinese, we, we have, we didn't.
November.
November. November eleventh and eighteenth, they would like to spend, um, doing decorations around town. Uh, last year, we had help, but lots of volunteers, and then the tree line will be December second, because of Saturday.
Awesome.
And keep it straight, it's Christmas time.
And I, um, attended, uh, by the safety commission meeting where, um, they actually talked about the USDA grants for residents, the disaster grant program for residents. That is, um, uh, still out there. There is, uh, it's for low to moderate income levels, and you could be like, uh, um, one to four family home, you, the income would have to be higher than sixty-two thousand. So it's, it, it's a higher number that you can, you don't have to like be at a twenty-two thousand dollar income to qualify, you can be at sixty-six or sixty-two thousand. Um, there's, and then it, it goes up from there, and that's on the USDA, uh, site. But those, uh, USDA funds are for residents, um, not just for, uh, government entities. I wanted to put that out there, and, um, it's Kyle. Sunshine, she's in, right? I was just. It's a sunshine, it's gonna be our new public, uh, time for, uh, wastewater, wastewater first. And so, welcome.
Thank you.
For being here. And, uh, I think that is all I have, and there are motion to adjourn.
So much.
All right. Adjourned. Until November, November seventh.